Do these types of forums. And while we have many of our business representatives that do not live in Edina, a great deal of them do call Edina home. So your participation tonight really helps them understand how you feel and how you view doing business in Edina, as well as economic development. And as Shelley mentioned, we've really been getting more involved in that whole economic development realm, as there's so much happening, especially along France Avenue. So thank you again very much for being here. I'm going to turn it back over to Shelley, and Shelley will give a little bit of a review regarding the format of this evening's discussion. Shelley?
Thank you, Lori. So tonight, we have eight questions, which you all received in advance, and we're trying to keep this to about 90 minutes. So we'll try to keep your responses to two minutes, and I'm just going to do a little bit of timekeeping. And we'll start with one order, and then we'll move, everyone will get a chance to respond first, and then we'll just move through the order. Don Hutchison is acting as our moderator tonight. Thank you, Don, for giving a wave. Don is the incoming board chair on the Edina Chamber of Commerce and Exploring Edina Board of Directors, and I'm thrilled to have him here tonight. Not only is he a resident of Edina, and he's also been involved with the Chamber of Commerce for over 20 years, and has always been very dedicated to our mission and very involved in everything we do on a day-to-day basis. We feel super supported by him and are lucky to have him on our Board of Directors.
Thank you.
Anything you want to say to introduce yourself, Don?
Sure. So Shelley, you just kind of wrapped up most of it there. I've been a resident of Edina for about 25 years. I have three daughters and a wife, all of whom who went to Edina High School. I have been fighting the disadvantage of not having graduated from Edina High School, but I'm trying to overcome that. Been a member of the Chamber for about 20 years, and it's a wonderful organization. It's a wonderful community, and I just want to say that it's a testament, I think, to the civic pride, the civic spirit, that so many of you are willing and interested in running for office to serve our city. I think it just says something really positive about what, frankly, the job can be a thankless job at times. And so I just thank you for your willingness to step up, your civic spirit and your desire to serve the community. Thank you.
Awesome. And then so-
I wish you could all take a spot on the City Council, because it's just kind of interest that makes our city great.
Right. Obviously, a lot of passion and dedication to the community. I'm going to have a couple people give a wave. We have an Economic Development Committee within the Chamber of Commerce, and some of those members are here with us tonight. Paul Nelson, would you give a wave? Paul is the Chair of our Economic Development Committee. Joe Arons. Joe works at North American Banking Company and has served on our board for a long time. Tim Murphy. Looks like Tim is driving.
I'm on the way home and parked.
Oh, fabulous. You're not zooming and driving?
I am not. It's not legal.
Thank goodness. So those three are from our ED Committee, and we're happy to have them with us tonight, too. Don, I'm going to have you go ahead and get started. We won't delay any longer.
Very good. And by the way, I'm going to end up voting for two of you, and I haven't made up my mind yet, so I have a personal interest in the conversation tonight. So again, thanks, and let's get started. We're going to start with, oh, Shelley, are you going to mute everybody?
I was just going to say, if everybody doesn't mind, I'm going to mute you unless you're talking, just because it's too easy to get background noise.
Needs to be some feedback and so forth inevitably in these Zoom calls. So the first question, I'm going to direct that first to Josh, so I hope that Shelley unmutes you. And Shelley, we're recording this, correct?
Yes, we are recording this, and we will distribute it. Likely, it will be posted on our website and via our email communications to our Chamber membership.
So question one here, Josh, is what are your general feelings about the development and the redevelopment of our city? And what's your vision for the continued development growth of Edina?
Well, thanks for the question. Edina is a fully developed city, so I think redevelopment seems to be the best term. As portions of Edina undergo redevelopment, I prioritize constituent concerns as follows. Think, one, we need to bring new heightened awareness to the immediately affected areas. I think that's a clear first consideration. Secondarily, we need to ask ourselves how this redevelopment will affect traffic corridors. While walking and biking are super important elements that we want to add to our community, we can't ruin the flow of traffic. Idling cars are big offenders in our environmental story. And furthermore, quality of life in those affected areas is directly affected by congestion. So the question becomes, are we making things worse? Lastly, how will this redevelopment plan add to the tax base today and not 20 years from now? Many of the changes we're making today create immediate infrastructure needs, so we need to get immediate benefits from them. I also support being stricter with TIF, as I said in the past, so it's used only when necessary and only to the degree necessary. The city's use of the "but for" test is more from development would not occur but for TIF support to this development with these bells and whistles would not occur but for TIF support. That's not really how TIF was intended to work.
Very good. Thank you, Josh. Next, we'll have the same question for Janet. Hi, Janet. Unmute Janet there, please.
Sorry, I'm trying, and it's actually not working.
Yeah, we don't have you unmuted yet. Maybe you can unmute.
I think I unmuted myself. Yes. Well, thank you once again for this opportunity to talk with you and tell you why I run. So in regards to my general feeling on development, I am a proponent of development and redevelopment. We have buildings that have aged for 50-plus years now, so they are due to be standover in some form or shape to just for rehab them. So that is going to be a fact of life if we want to survive into the next 50 years. That is definitely something we need to engage in. What I am a proponent for is definitely just sticking with our zoning and land regulation and ordinances that have been put in place. When developers come and put a project in front of us, we need to be able to hold those. So it gives each developer a fair chance to play, or at least understand what the rules are when they come into locating in Edina. I think that is a very important thing to have expectations. So with that, I am in favor of developing, and if we don't develop, we definitely will be dying. So I am going to be a supporter of development, but really sticking with our rules and regulation going forward. I do live in one of those areas that is definitely experiencing development in the southeast quadrant of Edina, and not too far away from tall buildings and density. Right or wrong, when I sit on council, it's going to be that that floodgate has already been opened, so the challenge is how do we rein that in? We already have a building that is going to be almost 13, 13 stories at Hazelton, that used to be the old Guitar Building. So that's going to be a fact of life that we need to change and try to reduce that. And that's where the challenge of balancing out becomes challenging, because it's going to say, you allowed so-and-so to do this, why am I not able to do it? But I am a proponent of development. Thank you.
Thank you, Janet.
Thanks so much. So Rhonda, what would you say to that question about development, redevelopment, and your vision?
Thank you. Edina is a fully developed community. Clearly, we're going through a stage, can you hear me? Am I loud enough?
Yes.
Okay. Clearly, we're going through a stage of redevelopment right now, and, but it has to be very clear and very sound about how it's going to impact our future. I think it has to be environmentally sound, and I would ask five questions of each developer and each development that is proposed. What is the net, number one, what is the net impact of the development? Number two, what is the ratio of green space to non-green space? Number three, what will be the development's impact on water infiltration and groundwater? Number four, what will be the development's impact on density, traffic, and pollution? And number five, what sustainable methods and materials can be integrated into the development engineering to improve its impact on the environment? I think answers to these questions should inform the council when they render judgment on new developments. They have to decide, is the development appropriate for this particular land parcel? Does the development make the city better for now and for the future? And I think we appreciate the increase to the tax base that the developments bring, but at the same time, I think TIF is being overused. I think developers are coming into the community with their hands out and asking for TIF. And I think in the, I believe in the last seven years, there have been nine TIF districts created. From my perspective, I believe that is overuse, and I think we have to use some restraint going forward. But again, the bottom line is, does this development make Edina better?
Great. Thanks so much, Rhonda. And next, Carolyn, how would you answer that?
All right. I think I'm unmuted. Thank you so much. So Edina is really blessed to be sitting on extremely valuable land, and the redevelopment that we're undergoing is a sign of a very healthy economy here. I lobbied for Greater Minnesota Cities for a number of years, and we have the opposite problem, and they're trying very much to attract people to Edina, and here we're trying to manage that. And I think that we are stewards of this wealth, and I'm very proud of the fact that this is such a desirable area, and I want to keep it desirable. You know, we just passed a new comprehensive plan that looks at development really happening in the seven, the six small area plans, and those were very carefully sketched out to manage development, to look at how a new project will fit within the neighboring properties. It should provide some predictability, not only for developers, but especially for the neighborhoods. These are agreements that were reached to reflect who we are as a city, and I hope that that will give some predictability as new projects come forward, that neighbors will know that their interests are being represented already, and that they don't have to mobilize so severely every time. One of the things that I've heard about the development of apartments in the Southdale area is the stress that new people will put on our shared resources. So we've got the lovely promenade that's out there, but we want to make sure that that's not the only park space available for new people as they move in. We want to make sure that these new developments have green space, which is open to all of the public, and kind of take some of the pressure off of the greater growth in the area. And similarly, with each development, we want to look at the traffic impact, not just on that particular building, but how does it fit into the overall structure of the neighborhood and the impact on neighboring properties and kind of maybe even a couple blocks out, because they're all undergoing redevelopment. Each one is not an independent project. We've heard a lot about the increase of apartment buildings in the Edina being built. There are a couple of things that are pushing that. One is we have a housing crisis. We've had 11,000 more families, households move into the Twin Cities area in the last 10 years than there were new housing units built. So we've got a real shortage of housing, and that's part of what's driving the market. The other thing that's driving the market is the fiscal disparities program that taxes commercial property differently from apartment buildings. And so there's a tax disincentive to building new commercial buildings. And of course, you know, our economy after post-COVID, and that's another question, but what the design, impact for on commercial property is going to be, we don't know yet. So that's kind of what's driving the new apartments, and you know, it's great that we have this redevelopment. Again, it's a healthy sign of a healthy economy, but we want to make sure that these new buildings fit within the plan, fit within people's expectations, and don't overburden our shared spaces, the transportation, water runoff, and green space. So, but I think, I think this is great that we have such a healthy economy, and I'm really excited, and I want to keep Edina a desirable place to work and to live.
Thanks, Carolyn.
Thank you.
You guys, I'm having trouble unmuting you. Every time I'm clicking buttons, nothing is happening. So when your name is called, if you don't mind unmuting yourself, I think that will help us move along smoothly. Ukasha, you're next.
Awesome. Thank you so much for organizing this event or this amazing forum. First of all, as someone with a millennial background and also a strong voice to the council, if elected, I will be a voice of moderation when it comes to a vision in development and redevelopment of the city. I will evaluate the impact of each proposed development in relation to the capacity of the city utility and transportation infrastructure, traffic volume and safety issues, and school district enrollment. As Edina moves forward, we need to continue to invite and consider community inputs on current and future development. We have a comprehensive plan, but each development should be evaluated in terms of its specific impact on surrounding areas and the city as a whole. What does this development brings to the residents? How is it benefiting the taxpayers? What is the benefit on that? And how is it, you know, like, how are we staying, you know, safe or healthy in that development and redevelopment?
Very good. Anything else, Ukasha?
Nope, I think that'll be it.
Thank you very much. So the second question, we're going to start, Janet, with you, and the second question, and maybe we've already touched on this a bit, but where do you stand on the somewhat controversial issue of building height, in particular in the Southdale area?
I truly appreciate this question, because this is my neighborhood. Just this past weekend, I was actually dropping lead in the Canadian neighborhood, and one of the residents in there did look forward to actually speaking with me, and she came out, although my idea is not to really speak with them, but she really was interested in this. She moved into Edina two years ago, but then we just have proposed the US Bank is going to be a tall building right behind her, and she expressed concern about that. So definitely, tall buildings are going to be a concern, and I am a proponent of development, but I really also would like to stick to the established rules of what we have, so we don't go against our constituents, who are people who are going to have hired us, and we are serving their interests. So for instance, this particular resident, she's new, two years in, and then comes to land, there's a tall building that is going to go right close in proximity. That's a very big disappointment when you've made a huge investment. So those are definitely going to be challenging issues to wrestle with. I know that about a year ago, there was the Estelle project that was going to go up, and thankful to the City Council, they listened to the resident and could not continue, move up, move forward with that tall building of 22 stories. So I am definitely a proponent of development, but I really strongly believe in also following our zoning and our land use rules in place. I also think it will be, it is very important for public hearings about controversial issues that are coming through the pipeline. There needs to be a better way to document, engage our public sentiments about those projects, because we need both the projects, but we also need the residents as well, because neither one, all of them are dependent on each other. If we have no projects and no customer to go in, we'll still, as a city, not do well. So it is going to be a fine line to tread, but I am going to say, I am going to listen to the residents' voices, and as the business community as well, I'm going to listen to it, and hopefully, we arrive to a point where both of us move forward in the interest of both communities, both the business and the residents need each other, and we need to reach a conclusion where we see the mutual benefit for both of us, not at the expense of the other. So, thank you.
Thank you, Janet. Rhonda?
It's a very touchy subject, as was said earlier. People are very, very strong in their views on this subject. But I will say that even though the base zoning is eight stories in that area between and France Avenue, when the Weston was completed in 2008, its height was 238 feet high. I believe there are 18 stories there, plus the monument on the top with the name Weston, which perhaps adds another couple stories. And that set a precedent for that area. And so developers are coming in, and they want to build tall, because they look at their bottom line, and it's, it seems to be cost-effective that way. The new Guitar Center is going to be 19 stories high, and their height will be 218 feet, which is approximately 20 feet less than the Weston Galleria, which I think is no accident. I think they wanted to be, the city and they together wanted to be just under what the Weston was doing, because that was the precedent. Now, with regard to 70th and France, I think they're wanting at this point in their sketch proposal to go higher, but I foresee that they're going to be brought down, and that maybe the Weston will be the precedent that will be the height that will be managed going forward. I do think with regard to scale, we have to look at not just the height of the building, but the impact at ground level, the first few stories, soften things with landscaping to create a human scale, so that when people are passing by, whether they're driving, they're walking, or cycling, that it doesn't seem overpowering, it doesn't seem like a concrete jungle, because when people go by a tall building, they're not looking up to see if it's, you know, 17 stories, or 18, or 19. They're really, really focusing on what they're seeing in the first few stories at ground level. So that's why I think it's vitally important to consider the green space to address residents' concerns in this area.
Great. Thank you. Thank you. And Carolyn, how would you respond to that building height?
Sure. Well, I found a couple of interesting things. I was out, when I was campaigning, I talked to a woman with an architectural background, and she said that actually, a tall, skinny building has much less impact on height and our light and air than one that's a monolithic around, you know, six to eight stories. And so to me, it's all about the light and the air that can move through the area. So if you have, you know, you don't want any canyons, but by the same token, you, if you can have something that's taller, that allows more light than something that's short and dense, I would be in favor of that. When they presented the Southdale Area Design Experience Guidelines, Mick Johnson said, think of it, that the building should be tapered as they go up, so you have that, don't have that heavy density. And then when the sunlight moves through, it's like a sundial, so the shadow moves very quickly across the neighbors and doesn't have that long lingering impact. And that's the way I would look at it, and, you know, they put four years' worth of work into the Southdale Design Experience Guidelines, and they're a lot smarter than I am, and I would start there and see, you know, what is it that our community activists have put together with experts and with a lot of research and hard work, and go from there. But to me, it's all about the light and the air, not about the height.
Thank you. Ukasha?
Yes. So building height restrictions within transition zones should be respected. And I say that because, first of all, how are we taking the inputs of residents who are living in that area to manage on what they need or what they expect in those heights, on those heights that we are building in those specific neighborhoods? I was lid dropping over the weekend, and then I talked to some of the residents in Southdale area who are really concerned about that, and it's not the first time that I'm hearing that. I've attended a meeting, a community conversation meeting with developers in Lake Coronalia, and then same issues have been coming up. So how are we promoting, or how are we, you know, like, kind of strong on promoting the public safety that comes with building heights? How are we protecting our neighbors, the character of our neighborhoods, the air and the light flow as well? How are we kind of promoting that? And the view of these residents is, when we build, you know, like, let's say 20-something story, is going to be restricted. So how are we managing that? And as I always say, is we, you know, like, we collaboratively work together for improved policies, and what that means is sitting down with the residents and ask them, what do they need? What inputs do they have? How can we collaboratively meet their needs? And that's all what matters to me right now.
Josh, how would you respond to that same question?
Thanks for the question. So it should be noted that I also support intensive development. I also do, in addition to that, support following height limits and setting a city code currently, really to respect residents in transition zones and to set that precedent and not set wild precedent. I talk with people a lot like Rhonda, who believe in human-scale development, scale that feels good when you walk by the buildings. We can handle some taller building, but we need significant setbacks from curb cuts. If these taller properties have nice green space and setbacks, would they be viable with TIF? I think allowing market forces to help tease out solutions under our zoning regulations is a smart approach. This also allows us to keep public funds out of these controversial projects that continue to pop up throughout our city. The Nolan Maines Project, while very nice buildings, has overwhelmed the small area. There will be many days where light will not shine on the streets and sidewalks. Respecting our traditional zoning would have made a huge difference. Take out public financing and TIF, and we would have seen human-scale project, excuse me, we would have seen human-scale at this location, driven by market forces, not urban planning concepts. I think there are a few immediate steps that we can take to tackle height issues. First, we can codify plan guidelines to make them less up to interpretation. Second, we should revise TIF policy to limit its use. Third, I think we need to pause use on planned urban development or reconsider its use. PUD is overused, overused, and is a workaround for current zoning, and it needs a complete overhaul. And I think last and most important, I think we need to start thinking about quality of life central to every development conversation for residents, and make it a true read on quality of life by asking residents and not just relying on developers' word.
Great. Thank you very much, Josh. So we're going to move on to the third question, and we'll start with Rhonda. The third question, Rhonda, is, many people who work in Edina cannot afford to live in Edina. What do you feel is the best way for the city to handle affordable or attainable housing in our city?
Well, I begin with the number that about 47,000 people come to Edina each day to work, and almost 25% of those people are in the medical and healthcare field. This is a huge, huge base for our city. But in addition to those medical workers, we have the people who provide service for us, like the teachers, city employees, police and fire, all of those people. I think the best way to approach the housing is through public and private partnerships. That means the city partnering with nonprofits like Aon and Common Bond. I think these, the project on 76th Street is a really, really good start. It's my understanding there will be 70 units there. I think that's a very, very good start. I think naturally occurring affordable housing, NOAA, the acronym, is, can be revitalized and increase long-term sustainability in our city that would provide stable homes for stronger futures. I think that's the best way to go. I'm not so sure that TIF is the good way to encourage affordable housing, because it's not, it doesn't go in perpetuity. After 20 years, or 25 years, when the TIF district terminates, that housing is gone as well, and those units go back to market rate. So I believe strongly, and as I said, working with the nonprofits to attain the housing.
Great. Thank you very much. Carolyn, we're going to move on to you, same question. Carolyn, we're going to move on to you, same question.
Okay, thank you. So businesses thrive when they can attract and retain a quality workforce. And as Rhonda mentioned, we have over forty thousand people, as you all know, coming into Edina every day to work. And it's really important that we can build some workforce housing. And as you know, as I mentioned earlier, there's a housing shortage in the Twin Cities metropolitan area. So there's a lot of pressure to build more housing and it would be great if we could build two types of affordable housing. One is workforce housing to get those workers here spending their time out, enjoying their time off instead of commuting an hour to get here every day or however far they have to go. That reduces their emissions, it reduces the stress on them and is a great opportunity to attract some smart people to our community. The other idea is to get senior affordable housing. And that will, if we have opportunities for people to age here in town, they're ready to move out of their homes, but they can't afford to. If we can get some senior affordable housing, now we'll open up those smaller homes for young families to move in and get, you know, that vitality of children and new families moving in from that. So really, it's a two-pronged approach for workforce housing and senior affordable housing. Unfortunately, under our federal system of building affordable housing, you have to have government incentives to do that. And at the federal level, you have tax credits, we have money from the state, and then at the local level, it is TIF financing. TIF financing is a lending program. It allows builders to borrow money at a reduced rate to build the project. It does not fund the affordable housing. It's a reduced rate of interest that they pay. It's the government rate as opposed to a private rate. So there are two types of affordable housing. One is affordable housing that is within market rate housing and that is time limited because of federal law and policy. And then there is permanently available affordable housing and that's often put together by nonprofit. Both of those are solutions to our housing shortage, especially our affordable housing shortage. I support both of them because it's really important to get those workers here and spending their time working and enjoying their private life and not spending it all commuting back and forth. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. And Ukasha, how would you answer that question about affordable or attainable housing?
Yeah, affordable housing provides a shelter to every person, which is a human right. As an immigrant or someone who have grown up in an affordable housing, I understand the need of that firsthand. My dear mother could not afford my school and my education if it wasn't the affordable housing that I grew up. And as a young family and a father who call Edina a home, I understand more the need of affordable housing even before COVID-19, before the pandemic. And as I say, that's a basic human right that we all need to preserve and protect. I believe that I will lead a collaborative effort process that will involve the city residents, the city council members, the stakeholders to develop a cost-effective, durable solution that could lead a public and a private nonprofit partnership in existing older buildings and transforming them into nonprofit managed housing to improve our communities. This will lead the city have a cost-effective, permanent and durable affordable housing. And I will promote the affordable housing that will be on transit. This will promote the workforce development homes for many workers in Edina. And I will ensure new and renovated affordable units receiving the city subsidy as sustainable and will be affordable for a minimum of thirty years or a lifetime of the building. Together, we can ensure that all our neighbors have the same basic dignity every Edina resident does have while we end homelessness. We can't wait any longer. The housing crisis during these economic uncertain times are real and it needs a swift and decisive leadership. Only that we can ensure that Edina will remain a livable community for all of us. And yes, I believe that we need an affordable housing because COVID-19 have exhibited the need more than ever. Right now, our schools, my father was a teacher, and we couldn't afford a market rate rent. And the same reason, the same story resonates to teachers, to firefighters, to seniors, to young families like mine who need affordable housing right now more than ever. And I promote that and I support that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then Josh, what's your response to that same question about affordable housing?
It's a great question. The residents of Edina have made affordable housing a top priority and so will I. Everyone agrees it's an important need and one that requires a delicate and balanced approach. What really distinguishes me from other candidates is the way I propose to look at multiple solutions to help solve the need. I believe affordable housing can be achieved without creating overpopulation or densification. The endless stacking of new construction and vertically stacked units is a really expensive, short-term solution to the affordable housing issue. In contrast, as I've mentioned before in conversations like this and it sounds like others on this call have looked at as well, Edina already has over nine thousand multifamily units. They're scattered throughout the city. City leader can collaborate with public or private nonprofit organizations to convert even seven percent of those units to permanently durable affordable solutions. And we can meet our affordable housing target for 2030 without increasing our population density at all. The current program of trying to incorporate ten percent or more temporarily affordable units at market rate properties is simply not effective or sustainable. We need permanency in our affordable housing stock. Our two largest partners today are Common Bond and Beacon Interface, both nonprofits committed to long-term affordability. I also favor utilizing existing structures in housing because it means much less construction, which means less waste and a lesser impact to the environment. In a recent article by Bloomberg City Lab, they examined the impact of new construction in Portland to determine the effect it had on emissions. They found that if they reuse just one percent of the buildings they expected to demolish over a ten-year timeframe, they would meet fifteen percent of their emissions reduction goals over the next decade. These types of side benefits should be a significant consideration for places like Edina. And lastly, as has been pointed out, focusing on preservation of naturally occurring affordable housing, referred to as NOAA, is an important thing for Edina to meaningfully deliver a stable or growing stock of affordable housing.
Thanks, Josh. Really appreciate that. And then Janet, what's your opinion about how to address and approach the affordable housing issue?
Yes, this is definitely a subject matter I care about, close and dear to my heart. COVID-19 has increased the need for more affordable housing in Edina. Currently, as we see today, the affordable housing vacancy rate in the rental market is at zero percent vacancy rate. But on the luxury side, we have three to four to five percent vacancy rate. So it definitely does speak to the need is so high. The demand is there, but supply is low. So I'm definitely supporting affordable housing on various levels. When we talk affordable housing, we're talking our teachers, our support staff at school. Those are people who are priced out of the market currently. Police officers, they are people who are performing what we call during this COVID-19, essential services. And we need to be able to provide that. As we realize COVID-19 has cut down our hours, some people are unfollowed. So it just speaks continuously on, we cannot ignore the importance of affordable housing. And as I'm speaking in a chamber of commerce that is interested in business and that, housing is an essential part that is tied into a thriving economy and a strong economy. The other issue I'm going to tag on the affordability piece of it and it's because I have twenty-some year children who are working in retail and they cannot afford a home or even an apartment here in Edina. They have to commute into Minneapolis. So one of them wants that Whole Foods making thirteen dollars, cannot find a home here. When we had unrest in Minneapolis and Minneapolis had a curfew, Whole Foods had to let them go home early so they can be able to beat curfew. It is in our economic interest to provide affordable housing so we can have retail workers, our staff at Fairview who are support staff can still be able to live in our community and that makes our whole economy thrive. The businesses are able to find their workers and if the unfortunate event of unrest that shuts down the highway or shuts down the city next door to us, we still are going to be able to get our essential services. It will be essential for me to be able to still go to the grocery store and get my goods. But if the workers have been let to go home because they needed to get home early, it does inconvenience the business environment and I am certain that was a major impact and it continues to reverberate into the business community. So I support affordable housing. I support using tax increment financing to do that. More importantly, I need to stress that tax increment financing only comes at play when that project cannot proceed for that particular developer. But even that money is going to be applied for where it is benefiting the general public. So it has a public good, it's not just benefiting the developer. So I hear the dissent about tax increment financing, but it is a tool that is valuable to be able to develop projects that otherwise would not be developed. So the second part I'd like to also mention is when it comes to homeownership, we do have Come Home to Edina program. It's a very good program. It's been around for twenty years. The increase of homeownership for the people we are targeting is still very slow. In my opinion, the second mortgage provided needs to be increased because the average price of a home in Edina has significantly gone up. Now, that baseline dollar amount of what a home someone can buy that is looking to get financing through Come Home to Edina was increased from three fifty, three sixty to, it's at four fifty right now. So that second mortgage equally needs to go up in order to keep up with the price increase that has been added into that. So I am on the housing task force. That is definitely one recommendation I will be working because otherwise it makes no sense. There's no major increase that is meaningfully happening in terms of the homeownership front. We are talking so much about the rental market, but the homeownership front affordability is almost nonexistent. The third and final part of it is if there is properties that are coming onto the market that they're first-time home buyers, homes, having the city be the one to purchase that through the Come Home to Edina or Housing Foundation program. And once they have control of that, be able to turn around and sell it to a family that would otherwise not be able to afford it. Because right now, the Housing Foundation is sitting on about two, three million dollars that the apartment building or multi-housing building have paid in as opposed to building affordable units in there.
Yeah, I was just going to mention, you're over your time, but thank you.
Thank you. It's a passion of mine, that's why I went over time. Thank you.
That's okay. Thank you.
We're going to move on to the fourth question. Carolyn, you're going to be up first. And, you know, Janet just alluded in some ways to this issue in her response and that has to do with civil unrest. And Carolyn, can you tell us your position on, you know, the role of protecting our business offices, our retail centers, our neighborhoods in the presence or the situation of civil unrest? You know, it's important to have a safe environment to live, a safe place to work, a safe place to exist, yet we want our police to respect the dignity and the rights of all people who live or who visit our town. How should the city council balance these public safety needs?
Sure, thank you. Well, I'll say, you know, I agree with the spirit of this question, but I kind of disagree with the question about balancing. I think respecting the dignity of people actually increases our public safety. A lot of public safety is a matter of trust and the relationship between the police and the people that they are protecting is very important. And the more there's a feeling of community trust between the police and the people and all of us, the better. And so to that end, I want to talk a little bit about the police and then I want to talk about a couple other things. Our Edina police force is very highly trained and they're connected with the community and they are populated by police officers who want to be here. That makes us a really lucky community. These police officers do a great job. We can continue to strengthen these relationships between the officers and the public with the current community engagement programs. And I also would like to see some increased transparency of their policies so that people who are concerned can look and see, well, what policies are the police acting under and better understand where they're coming from. But a community that knows its police force is one that's well-suited to address public unrest. In the long term, it's really important, again, I talk about light and air and green space and development. Those are all things that also contribute to public safety. When you can see where you're going, when there's plenty of fresh air and believe it or not, trees actually contribute to public safety and to human, it just makes people feel more secure and safer. So in the short term, I think, you know, the trust between the police and the community is very important and that is very strong. But in the long term, we want to make sure we maintain that light and air and green space for our public safety.
Thanks, Carolyn. And Ukasha, what would you say about how to either balance the needs or address the needs of public safety in the community and the business community?
Yes, so yeah, that's a great question, by the way. It's something that I have an experience on. I am a small business owner in Minneapolis. Me and my brother own a small business which is located in the center of South Minneapolis. And during this civil unrest, we have seen the tents that have been there. And I was texting late in the day my brother on what can we do? And then I came up with this idea where we need to organize our neighbors and also bring all small business owners in that mall together in a WhatsApp group where we can talk about ways we can enhance our safety. So, and this is what sets me unique of all candidates. We started, and I lead on that, which was a Neighbors for Neighbors effort where we collaboratively worked with law enforcement. We collaboratively worked with intelligence and also community leaders, stakeholders, city council, all together in a one group, business leaders, where we fostered the safety of our communities during the civil unrest in Minneapolis. And the things that we have done was amazing. We defended many businesses from being burnt down. We had organized the neighborhood into blocks where we had a block lead and we had people come in a park, bring diverse food. We had the Somali tea, the samosas in the evening. And then we'll be writing down on boards and cards where people will just display, this is Donban, this is Children's Home, and then amazing quotes. And it all showed that diverse efforts where communities can collaboratively work together to protect themselves and also to protect others. And I say this all the time. We move together and we are stronger together whenever we work together. And I've seen that in my personal experience during the civil unrest. And in 2019, 2018, one thing I've done is I have improved the relationship between the law enforcement and the community by bringing them into a tea and talk community dialogue where we significantly talked about things that unite us all and what makes us stronger and how we can collaboratively work with law enforcement in public safety. And as a council member, I will increase those communications and dialogues that will be beyond race or, you know, like gender or background, that will bring everybody on those dialogues, no matter where they came from, to collaboratively improve policies, foster public safety, promote affordable housing and all issues that we need. And mental health is one main thing for our public safety as well. We will work together to increase that and to foster that. Our young people need to be at the forefront. I am a youth champion and actually I was awarded for the Youth Award in connecting with youth and children. I am a youth champion and actually I was uh, uh, awarded uh, for the youth award in connecting with youth and children on twenty eighteen by Edina Community Foundation. And what that means is the efforts I've done personally to create a community peace ambassadors that was led by young people. And what these peace ambassadors have done is that they have talked to communities in collaborating with them and their efforts on ways we can resolve conflict and promote peaceful coexistence. And those are the lens that I will use to promote that.
Thank you, Yukaisha.
Thanks. And um, let's turn to Josh now. Josh, how would you answer that question?
That's a great question. Um, I think you said it well. I think it's imperative to keep Edina as a safe environment to live, work and play. I think this obviously applies also to commerce. I think it starts like many things with empathy, uh, respect and understanding. Um, I think it's also critical that uh, we continue to adequately fund our police, which I wholeheartedly support. These are men and women who are a critical part of our community. Um, I, I would also need to discuss um, with the police department, determine what resources they currently have and what plans they have in place. If these plans haven't been communicated to the business community or the community more broadly, then we should work to figure out how they can be communicated so people are informed. Um, and can ask informed questions if they see a need for more resources or response plans. I think as Carolyn pointed out, transparency and communication is absolutely critical. Um, I think this ultimately comes down to uh, and falls under the city manager, but the council can request the information and if needed, we can help set policy and adjust funding accordingly.
Great. Thank you very much, Josh. Um, and Janet, what, what would you have to say about that same topic?
Yes, thank you. Uh, this is a very timely question. Uh, and all of us in the community need to feel safe and protected. I need to be able to, uh, if I am in distress, be able to pick up the phone and call law enforcement and not have to fear that that's simple act of making a phone call can end my life. The United States is in a racial reckoning following the protests that began uh, begun after the murder of George Floyd. Um, in addition to that, uh, our own city here in twenty sixteen, we had a s- it didn't end fatally, but we had an incident of police apprehending a black man who was simply walking down the street. And from that incident, uh, Race and Equity Task Force was formed. I support the findings that the Race and Equity Task Force came up with. They made recommendations and one of those recommendations was to collect data on police stops and searches. And from what I know to today, um, that data is supposed to be broken down on who's being stopped, what is their race and on and on. I have requested to see that report. It's about two years later. I, the, the reason one, I feel very disappointed in that because if we meaningfully want to address public safety and we care about all communities, we need to be able to do, uh, to do something as basic as that. Cause a lot of money was invested in the Race and Equity Task Force to come up with that. Uh, another issue that I would like to address in terms of um, ensuring public safety for all of us, if all of us are involved in a meaningful way, uh, in terms of employment, um, our health, um, our rate of incarceration or poverty levels are low, that is essentially an investment that can reduce the interac- federal interactions between pub- uh, the public and law enforcement. So I am saying that because not all of us are very comfortable picking up the phone and making that interaction with the police. But it all comes down to, there has been divestment in certain communities and that definitely has exacerbated the um, this, the situation that we are in. And so we do need to examine that and truly make a conscious effort to change that trajectory. We cannot continue doing things the same way. And that's, that's what I'm going to say as far as public safety goes. Um, we have positive things that are happening. Uh, there is a um, a site where you can go on the website of the city and report hate crimes. But uh, we definitely have a, a lot of work to do. So, thank you.
Thank you, Janet.
And then Rhonda, uh, your response, same question.
Thank you. Uh, I would start by saying good policing rests on community trust. And we achieve this by ensuring that officers are well chosen and well trained and set the bar high. If you're a law enforcement officer, you have one of the only jobs in the country where it is legal in your job description to take away somebody's life, liberty and property. With that power, there must be transparency and police need to be held accountable. Our police department is proud of its community involvement and high level of service and is committed to keeping Edina a safe place to live and work. Uh, recently in the uh, two thousand twenty-one preliminary tax levy discussion, uh, the budget calls for a new position in the police force to respond to increased demand for public safety response while maintaining response times. That's very, very important. Uh, the basis, I would say, and this is based on a conversation I had with Darren Davis, who was the two thousand nineteen Officer of the Year in our department and who I think represents the best of law enforcement. Uh, the basis is respect. Respect with every person he has interaction with. Respect for every person that the department has interaction with. But he did admit that this is a rough time and there are challenges. He also said that across the country, there are bad apples. That was his term. There are bad apples in police departments. And so it's very important to root that out. But here in Edina, I believe, uh, we have a first-rate department. And if we continue to keep that bar high, not only with hiring, but intensive training along the way, uh, I think we can achieve the goals that we've set out. Uh, one of the things that he talked about in a given situation is diffusing things. Not ramping things up, but trying to diffuse things and showing respect at the same time so that everything is mitigated and we don't have some of these egregious terrible outcomes that we've seen in other cities. So I guess that's my position. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rhonda.
Thanks, Rhonda. Appreciate that. You know, um, next question and we'll start, Yukaisha, with you. Uh, this issue of race and racial equity, uh, these are really front and center and have been now for a number of months, not only locally, but on a national basis. And this question is, what is something, what is one action item that we could all do or that any individual could do now to bring about positive change that benefits everyone?
Yeah, this is, sorry, I, did you say Josh? Did you say Yukaisha?
Sorry, I said Yukaisha. Sorry, Josh.
Um, yeah, that's a, that's a great question. And uh, when we talk about race and equity, how is the city using that lens? Uh, in my perspective, I think it starts right here where every one of you or every one of us can elect the diverse voice that will represent all neighbors in the decision-making table. And that will be equitable decision-making. It just starts right here. That's the one action thing that we can all do. And it, it just goes all across every sector in our economy uh, where diversity and inclusion is one of the key things that lead us in our way of life. And as a city, we can achieve the accountability and the data collection, employee training and diversity, development and enforcement of policies using those lens with the best voices that represent equality and race in our community. And uh, the other thing I was gonna add is that moving together as a strong community will also enhance and improve that. And as I always say, let's move this together.
Very good. Thanks. Okay, Josh.
Okay, for real this time, I'm not stepping on anyone's line. Um, so, so first, I think it's an important thing. Um, I think the council can and should get training to become better informed on the topic. Uh, beyond that, I, I'm not certain that there's one particular action. Um, it's likely a combination of many actions, many seem like seemingly daily um, things, small things. I think it starts with kindness, empathy, understanding and respect, as has been pointed out um, for one another earlier. Edina is getting more diverse. Our past wasn't always as honorable with regard to race. As a prospective uh, council member and someone who hasn't dealt with the adversity of bias like many other citizens in this country, I think my job is to be more of a listener frankly, than a topic on, uh, than a talker, excuse me, on topics like this.
Great. Thank you, Josh. Um, next Janet, how would you address that same question?
Yes, um, this is front and center. And as a state, the, the statistics are damning for a race perspective and equity perspective, whether it is in education outcomes, in health outcomes, in homeownership outcomes. The disparities have just glaringly appear, I mean, not appear, they are really bad. What can one do to do, to start changing that? The, we need to take immediate action. And when I talk about affordable housing or housing, that is definitely a foundational thing to be able to build all these other things. Where you live determines your, um, it's one of the determining factors on social, uh, becomes a, um, an item that determines your, makes social determinants of one's health. The people who are living in safe neighborhoods, even their stress level is significantly less. And that really translates into less visits to the doctor. Um, the children are more at peace. They can go to school and not feel uh, distressed. If they are getting a good education, eventually it's an investment into our economic via uh, vitality. So what I am going to say when it comes to race, racial, race and racial equity, it's closing that gap essentially comes down to housing. Can we make that affordable and accessible? Cause our statistics right now in the state are terrible. Homeownership for black families is at forty-seven percent. Homeownership for white families is at seventy-six percent. And homeownership is one of those building blocks to a success of a family. It is one of those blocks where you can make investment, draw out your equity, pay for your children's um, college. And if they have college education, of course, the economy benefits. But also that means that the children, my children are coming up with no student debt, which enables them to come back and reinvest in the community even more. By working, they are able to buy their first homes without being delayed. And the benefits just reproduce in themselves. Uh, we, we do have work to be eliminated, the barriers that have already held some of us behind and not be able to fully participate in uh, development of all of us. So um, that is a broad subject that I cannot summarize very quickly. But investments in housing, in our health, in our education for all children to succeed is something I would like to be able to see. Um, and from an um, a business perspective as a Chamber of Commerce, partnering between businesses and schools and offering uh, enter opportunities for students who are still in high school or junior to come in, internet businesses is a huge investment. That is a for, a partnership that I can see the community benefiting as a whole. So if there's anything I, if I am fortunate to win, that is definitely something I'm going to champion. And I can see as one aspect that narrows down the racial equity uh, in gap is providing opportunity for training, for um, trade, for those young fourteen, fifteen-year-olds to work with their hands and have a ready skill to be able to use straight up after high school. So that's it.
Thank you.
So um, Rhonda, what's, what's something that we can do, something practical we can do now to make a difference?
Well, to begin with, speaking of the city council, I think the council has an opportunity to set an example through engagement, an intentional willingness to cultivate a sense of belonging in the city. And that sometimes means going out to the communities rather than waiting for them to come into us. Because sometimes people feel they are at the margins and they're not exactly certain how to, uh, how to be involved. Um, I also think the Chamber of Commerce has a unique role in this by providing opportunities for minority business growth and development, leading to community involvement and enrichment. So I think it's a twofold thing and I think that the city and the chamber can really partner in this in a very, very substantial way. And on both sides, developing this pathway for entry into our community and building and supporting collaborations. Uh, again, the bottom and the top of all of this is to engage all communities in the city.
Great. Thank you so much, Rhonda. And then Carolyn, wrapping up with that same question, what's your, what are your thoughts on that?
Yes, thank you. So I, this was a question I really did like the way it was worded. And it asks, what can we all do now? And I think that it, everybody has a role to play in addressing this. First, I'd like to establish that racism is structural. It's not personal. So it's, it's a system of policies that discriminates based on race. Personal is prejudice, but we have to look at this systemically and um, we all have biases and policies either enforce those biases or stand um, to protect other people, different people against our biases. And so we look at this from a policy point of view. But the thing we can do immediately, each and every one of us, is take an inventory how we as individuals, organizations and businesses are currently addressing race and equity. What's our hiring process? What are our policies? Are, are we doing enough? Are we, you know, being effective in what we're doing? Um, then from that, to familiarize ourselves with the history of racism. Where has there been racism? Uh, you think of realtors, you think of bankers, you think of caregivers. Everybody lives within a structure of racism in the, in the United States. And we can address, we can identify where that has been historically part of our policy. And then to seek policies that redress that, that, that reverse it. Are we treating everybody who comes through our door um, with dignity and, and respect? Um, so it's take an inventory, um, see how that fits within the overall um, history of, of racial structure and um, seek policies that take actions um, to be more fair and just. I want to point out, in the um, Race and Equity Task Force, one of the stories that are highlights that I stuck in my mind, I checked it this afternoon, um, is that people of color do not feel comfortable shopping in Edina. So that I think that's a real specific example of where there is a feeling of racism or prejudice. Um, and what, what is the impact of that? And, and what does that make us as, you know, as a business or as a city? So each of, each of our organizations has the opportunity to make a difference and to, um, to address this. And it can be a po- very positive thing. We get more customers that way. We get more um, friends and, and neighbors. Um, and I think we all are better off when we can address these structural um, discriminations. So, thanks. Thank you, Carolyn.
Thanks. So uh, Josh, uh, you'll be the, the next up for the next question. And this question is, uh, empty office space in Edina. What are your thoughts on how to deal with the possible issue of, of empty office space uh, as a result of the COVID nineteen pandemic?
Yeah, um, really good question and really important one as well. Uh, as a primary point, I think we're standing on a precipice in this pandemic. Uh, businesses like consumers are adapting. I haven't been to my physical office space since March. Now honestly, I have no plans to do so in the near future. I think other businesses are doing same at the, or same thing, excuse me, as well. More and more people are gonna be working from home near term. This puts commercial management in a bind. Uh, during this time, adding more residential um, office inventory is a really risky bet. Um, I'm sorry, more residential and office inventory is really a risky bet. I'd start with slowing down TIF development um, in consideration to allow us ample time to let this stuff settle a little bit. It's truly impossible to know what the long-term impact is here at this juncture. Um, I do think we need to provide additional reasons to come to the community. Um, encouraging things like farmers markets, festivals and other events to give people a reason to visit Edina. Um, we also need to do anything and everything possible to make sure it's easy to get around Edina, that the public realm is attractive and that our community feels safe and welcoming to people of all walks of life. That means we need to make strategic investments in facilities we own and have neglected to maintain and that have sat dormant in our growing list of unfunded capital improvement. An example would be bringing Bremer Arena up to ADA standards to allow everyone access. Uh, in the end, I, I don't think voters expect the twenty twenty-one Edina City Council to materially address these new realities. We have incredibly limited capabilities. Just consider the hundred thousand dollar small business loan program- Just consider the hundred thousand dollar small business loan program that was implemented this year. While it maybe had some value to a few, it was not scalable for a few reasons. First, we had limited funds. Secondly, the city does not have the loan underwriting skills. Essentially, the process of picking the winners and losers is problematic. I think what the city really needs to do now is tend to its own challenges and we need fiscal discipline now more than ever.
Great, thank you Josh, really appreciate that. Janet, how would you respond to that same question?
Yes, I like to start out with like a moment of crisis also presents opportunity. And yes indeed, we are in a moment of crisis with COVID-19. Many retail spaces are going to be empty, they were already shifting. Just for context, I started my career in the retail space and definitely the merchandising store that I started at, which was Dayton's Marshfield's, is no longer on the landscape. So that's how quickly things change. And so it's just the nature of business environment change is inevitable. So these spaces have come up, they become, they are privately owned, but could we make them community assets? And if so, I live in a place where I can tell you we don't have a community center for the two, three-year-olds who are homebound because they can't go out into daycare or whatever. Would that be an opportunity to explore what else we can use these spaces for? It does present a lot of spaces and opportunities for that. Like I said on a previous question previously, is young high school students who are juniors and seniors, they are transitioning into college or whatever they need to do for their young adult. They could use that space as an incubator for innovation. So I don't have all the answers, but I definitely can see that this is an opportunity. Out of the ashes, we can rise and create a new environment for us. So definitely, I don't have all the answers, but we have an opportunity to make use of that space in different ways. So thank you.
Great, thank you Janet. Rhonda, how would you respond to that question?
I would say that work from home protocols amid the coronavirus have prompted companies to rethink their space needs. And employees have adapted to working from home. Significant increases in available sublease office space has become a nationwide phenomenon. But I would also say it's going to take some time to rebalance after we return to a new normal. With regard to repurposing some of this office space, while it's true that many people can work from home, there are some industries where it is essential for people to meet with other people. And one of those is the medical field. While telemedicine is very good, most people want to meet with their care providers or for their physical therapy or whatever they have to do. So some of these office buildings could be repurposed as medical office buildings or medical facilities because that is one area, as I said, where people need face-to-face contact. Another suggestion is, I was reading recently that in Manhattan, big tech is leasing new office space and going bigger. And I'm talking about Amazon and Apple and Facebook and Google creating new corporate campuses. And maybe that's something to rethink. Because on one hand, all the open spaces that are no longer plausible or possible with COVID, maybe we need larger spaces to keep people more separate because of something like the pandemic. And maybe think in terms of creative energy for new corporate campuses. And maybe looking to the startups of the future relocating to Edina and providing the space where they can feel this energy and work with it to build whatever they happen to do. So repurposing that I think would be a really good thing as well. But to get the lay of the land, I think we're going to have to go a little bit longer before people start investing. Thank you.
Thank you Rhonda. And Carolyn, what are your thoughts?
Sure, well, we've got a short-term problem and a long-term problem. And we don't know what the long-term is going to look like. But in the short-term, we've got empty space and unemployed people. And what I'd like to see is a structure created where you can have short-term leases. So whether they're maker spaces that are shared spaces or something for someone to get an office for eighteen months or less than that, six months. But I think that the city can help and entities like the Chamber or Greater MSP sort of come up with a legal structure for a short-term lease or a shared space lease for people who want to start new businesses because they've been laid off from their old business. And I think especially both in terms of artisans and artists. And I'm sure there are lots of people who have lost their job in all this and would love to have the opportunity to put some ideas to work, but they don't have the structure to do that. I know in New York, they've been creating short-term pop-up retail. So there are spaces where retailers come in and especially artisans, small producers, and they set up a shop for three months, for six months, and then they take it down and another retailer comes in. So creating that structure where something like that moves smoothly and a lot of the issues have been worked out ahead of time. So this is just a matter of people with maybe a small amount of funds conducting business for a short period of time and moving on. But using that space in the interim while we transition to a new economy, if we do transition, and nobody knows what the long-term outcome is going to be, but in the short-term, creating that legal structure so that people can use the space while it's sitting idle.
Great, thank you Carolyn. And then wrapping that question up, Ukasha, what's your thought on that?
Actually, it's a good question. And my thoughts on this is collaborating with art community. And what that means is right now, what we have been doing is I personally connected a women, migrant women who are doing ads and like making tow bags with a specific owner of a building where they can both collaboratively work together on a short-term period where they will do their ads and exhibits on there and pay some of those funds that they get through those ads for rent, you know, like for subsidized rent. And what that can help is it can provide specific rental money to the pocket of the owner of that building and also empower the women for the work that they are doing. And in a long time, what this does is it opens the eye of the residents in Edina for a great space that can exhibit these beautiful places. People will come see and then they'll see the ads and they're going to see the space which is up for lease. And some or one person can be interested in renting that. And that's a way we can promote that. The other thing, the other way I think we can promote is cross-sector collaboration with nonprofits. So I lead a nonprofit organization and we have been looking for a space for, I think, in the last COVID era, where we can give a specific social distance space to the youth to be a hub for them so that they can learn the skills that we are teaching them. And we had a funding that we can use to pay the owner of that space for a rent. So as a city, we are a city that's been wealth of communication tools that we can use to communicate between the owners of those spaces and the communities that are looking for that space or people that are looking for that space. And we can feature it in About Town, in all other platforms that we have so that people doesn't know that there's a specific space that's available and they can rent it. And again, we can repurpose that to either be a hub for food production, an emergency food production, a place where a nonprofit can provide supplies and utilities or you know, like supplies that they need to eradicate COVID symptoms, COVID things. We can provide them tools that they need to succeed. We can provide supplies for their school, children who are in school. So there's many ways that we can repurpose those spaces to ensure that it's being occupied in the light of COVID-19.
Thanks Ukasha.
Thanks. So we're going to move on to the next question. And Janet, you're going to be first up on this one. And it's interesting because Edina is a regional retail magnet. So it's not just local, it's a regional retail magnet. And it retails an ever-changing field. And how can the city council best support this ever-changing regional powerhouse that we have here in Edina in retail?
Thank you, that is such a timely. Southdale Mall was one of the, was the first enclosed shopping mall. I think we are just celebrating fifty-six or something years since it was constructed. And as you can see, the landscape of retail is changing with Amazon, with minutes of delivery and all that. And COVID has everything you can order at your fingertips. So the brick and mortar business are going to change and shift significantly. There's a paradigm shift that is inevitable. So what do we use that space for? We probably, I'm still using my lens as a merchandiser from Marshfield's days. It could have small square footage where it just displays a few samples of items for those who are still interested in wanting to see what is available before they go online and order it. But definitely, we are in a different landscape. Even at the beginning of last year, any retailer who had created their cash flow and built their financial reports and statements, COVID-19 changed that drastically. So I am, as a former small business owner, I am scared of looking at what those financial statements are going to look at the end of the year or whenever they close their books. But definitely, the brick and mortar is going to change. We probably are going to have to adapt that to warehousing, which has its own pluses and minuses. When I see the frequency with which Amazon is delivering goods, my thought process is what amount of pollution is going in? Because so many drivers are busy driving small packages here and there on a day-to-day basis. How devastating is that on our road infrastructure? Both the wear and tear and just congestion. So retail is going to change. I am going to advocate that we put policies and frameworks in places that are flexible to adapt to that ever-changing condition. Because even the supply chain of bringing those goods into the store is drastically going to shift. So can we make those goods locally? COVID-19 is saying, yes, we probably should produce our own medicine or most of our products locally. So there's so much that is still coming out, that is still unknown. But we are needing to remain flexible and agile and adapt to that space. That's what I have at this moment, thank you.
Thank you Janet.
Next up is Rhonda, how would you see the city council supporting retail?
Well, as you note, it's an ever-changing scene. And none of us knows how this landscape is going to proceed. Bricks and borders seem to be in trouble at the moment. But I have, today is Amazon's Prime Day. Many people know about Amazon Prime. This year in 2020, it's a two-day prime. And it gave me an idea that maybe Edina, the city of Edina, creates customer loyalty program for all the retail in Edina. Call it Edina shops, I don't come up with the name. But this would include, for a nominal fee, people could be part of it. I mean, I know Amazon Prime charges a lot of money, but this could be even twenty-five dollars, fifty dollars. Discounts, special advantages for members, use for promotion and advertising. And all of this could be online. Once people register and people know their email accounts, everybody can be approached that way. There could be annual events, there could be incredible savings of products for shopping. And that way, the whole city could band together, as I said, to create this loyalty program to the city, which I think might actually be a really, really good thing for the city going forward.
Interesting idea, thank you so much Rhonda. And now we'll go to Carolyn.
Hey, thank you. So as everybody's noted, that retail is really changing. My understanding is that people are seeking experiences. And the city council can control what development looks like and making Edina a wonderful place to come visit. If you think of Centennial Lakes, it used to be a gravel pit. And now people from all over the region come to Centennial Lakes. As we develop the Southdale area, making it walkable, exciting, green. That's a reason to come and it's foot traffic that drives retail. And if we can get people coming to visit, they can come and then they'll have an experience shopping in Edina. Retail itself is going to change, it's probably going to be what they call bricks and clicks, where you have, you come in, you try something on and then you order what the size that you want. So less inventory, but more of an experience. You know, currently we've got the art fair and we've got Taste of Edina, these events that are really fun, that bring the community in to participate. And it's a reason to come visit Edina. And so we want to make sure that our decisions as a city are encouraging people to think of Edina as a fun place to visit and to make the retail experience a destination. So that, because shopping is fun, going online is kind of boring compared to going out and spending a day shopping. And it can be a nice getaway and we want to get that foot traffic going through. One thing I want to tout, the Energy and Environment Commission created a green business recognition program. And if you're not familiar with it, and I know this is going out to your members, please apply for a green business recognition. The city of Edina has a questionnaire and you can fill it out and we will give you a tag for your website or for your window that says that you are a green business. And that's tailored so that it can be a small business like an insurance agent in an office and a big business like Western National Insurance. So it's all the whole gamut. And I highly encourage everybody to apply because we love to recognize the good thing that people are doing. And especially retail where the foot traffic says, oh, this is a green business, I'll come here and shop. But it is, it's all about making this an interesting place to visit, a destination and to get those eyes on the windows and the merchandise that our retailers have to sell.
Thank you Carolyn.
Ukasha, you're up next.
As a small business owner and someone who has that retail experience, I think ways we can collaborate with the city is to recognize the effort of these retailers. I mean, what are they doing different? What are they bringing to our communities? These different kind of, you know, economic experiences that they're bringing in this beautiful town or beautiful city. The other thing that we are right now doing is I'm serving on Edina's Energy and Environment Commission and we are doing the green recognition, the green recognition for businesses. And we can use that, or same as to that, recognize the businesses that are going beyond and above, you know, above and beyond. The other thing we can do is the city can adopt a business diversity ordinances. And that can ensure that the independent neighborhoods serving businesses don't get crowded by the chains and municipalities around the city. The other thing we can do is we can facilitate an adaptive reuse of vacant building. And that's why I said we can partner with art community on that. So the other thing the city can do is we can create a council or you know, work with the Chamber of Commerce itself and the city working together on improving ways we can collaboratively work with retailers. Right now, I was a member of a group that I've started in metro area for small businesses and all these are retailers. There was more than five hundred small business owners. And you can't believe the ideas and the solutions that we bring into that specific group. And you know, it's really diverse, it's everyone. Sometimes these retailers, they sell products or items that carry story, how are we going to share that? We have the About Town that we can share. We have so many media engines that we can share. We have the About Town that we can share. We have so many media engines that we can share what these retailers are bringing. And the last thing is we can have an office dedicated to retailers or small business owners in the in the city hall where they can find resources, where they can find guides and navigations, where they can find financial opportunities. There's those retailers who are faced by technology barriers, who are faced by language barriers. They want to be sitting with someone in our own community, you know, like in an oral way, where they can navigate through these complicated times and through this unsettled through this economic uncertain times. And ways we can improve that is to collaboratively work together to a stronger economy.
Thank you, Yukasha. And then Josh, how can we support and promote our retail powerhouse here in Edina?
Yeah, it's an amazing question. It's actually a pretty complicated question as well. So I work in retail marketing. It's a super challenging environment, as you well know. I think it really starts with engaging and listening to Edina business owners and stakeholders, i.e. consumers. I spoke a little bit about providing additional reasons to come to Edina to promote traffic, encouraging things like farmers markets, festivals, and other events that give some experience around shopping. I think it's also investment into the medical community as well. They drive a lot of traffic into our municipality. And while they're there, you know, going to doctors' visits, et cetera, they do shopping. I think you mentioned it, the implications of the coronavirus have been massive. Consumer behavior has really scientifically shifted, perhaps permanently, and consumers are interacting with the outside world far less. So figuring out how we can drive traffic and engagement with brick and mortar is definitely going to be a challenge. And I see this every day in my work. I think we're at a great precipice of unprecedented challenge and change, which is going to require some really thoughtful discussion and willingness to act quickly. I've had the good fortune of working for and with some of the biggest businesses in the world, and I've had to unwind some pretty messy hairballs and complex problems in my career and restrategize to meet the unique needs of the task at hand. I'm a proponent of quality thinking and inclusive discussion from the onset and in the middle of the problem and making decisions that are rooted in insight and data. I and believe, I also, excuse me, believe in acting with a sense of urgency and purpose. Conversely, I do not believe in doing just to do, nor do I expect different results when employing the same tactics. So if a strategy or tactic needs to change or isn't effective enough to accomplish the goal, I think we change it. I think overall, we need to have a willingness to pivot, adapt, and change very, very quickly because some of these behaviors are very deeply rooted. And it's going to be really important as we start to revive our local economy here. And I think this underscores all of all of the need here and all these moving pieces. It's really important that we elect and look for leadership who's up to the challenge, leadership who doesn't shy away from hard conversations, who bring people together. It's going to take a massive effort to bring people together who are focused on big-picture thinking. And if elected, I would vow to do that type of critical thinking and inclusive conversation, bringing it to the table.
Great. Josh, thank you so much. You know, I'm looking at the clock, and we've, believe it or not, we've already burned through 90 minutes. And I'm impressed with the quality of your answers as a group and with each of you as individuals. I'm impressed with the commitment and the level of interest, which seems quite sincere. And I know that none of you are applying, running for election for the the pay grade or the pay scale that's offered. So I really, really appreciate it. I'm going to turn it back to Shelley at this point. And Shelley, cheers. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Great job, Don. I would echo all of Don's comments. I learned a lot listening to you guys tonight, and actually, some of your suggestions are amazing. And I hope with, you know, those of you who are elected, that we that we have a chance to engage with you and figure out how we can work together to better support all of our businesses, our retail, you know, dealing with the the empty office space, should we have it. So I really appreciate all your thoughts and ideas, and thank you for your time tonight. Best wishes to all of you. I wish you all the the best as you come down the home stretch here on your on your candidacy.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you so much. We appreciate the time this evening.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks for joining us.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thanks to Paul and Tim and Joe for logging on and listening. I really appreciate your time as well.
I have a question for Don.
Oh, Don is still there. Good question.
Yeah, I have a question for Don. Don, did you work for Data Card in Minnetonka, which has become EnTrust Data Card?
No, I did not.
You did not? Okay.
No, must have been another funny-looking person. I wasn't that.
Oh, Shelley or any of you. So do you, we are looking for an open spaces. So how can we, like, how are you guys promoting right now for those empty spaces that need to be repurposed?
We, well, first of all, I would say this is something that we're looking forward and that we feel like could be an issue. So it's not necessarily an issue right now. But I know that, you know, as businesses look at their budgets and look for ways to be more efficient, that some smaller companies may may evacuate their spaces or not renew them. We work closely with Bill Nieuwendorf at the city of Edina. When when either we know of someone who is looking for a certain type of space or if we know that he's looking for a certain tenant, we we, you know, do what we can to network with our members to find out what needs we can help fill. And I would also love for Lori to comment on your question as well.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. That's a great question. I've had an opportunity to talk to many of the property owners, especially along France Avenue here with all of the office buildings. And they have not made any decisions yet, but they're keeping a close eye on it. Many of them are going to be ready to turn on the dime and change the 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 infrastructure of their office space to the needs of the businesses. I I know of one in particular where they will not all be coming back into the office. They will be rotating. And going forward, they would like more space when they get back. So those property owners are very open to being creative in how they reconfigure the existing office space. So, yeah, I don't know that any decisions have been made yet, but they're certainly taking a look at it and and ready to make some changes very quickly.
Okay, awesome. One suggestion to the Edina Commerce, Chamber of Commerce. I mean, if you guys can have a portal where where all the members who have an open space can put the open space and the the rent amounts and all that, and we can guide people who really need spaces, then that will be, I think, a brilliant idea. What do you guys think?
Yeah, yeah, that that's a great idea. And there's, there's actually, I will check into that. There is a portal that is is out there in the real estate world that lists some of that information. And I will check to see if there is a way for us to obtain that information specifically for Edina. I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, I like that suggestion, too.
Yeah, great idea.
Yeah, awesome.
Any other questions for us? Please, you know, feel free to pick up the phone, give us a call, email us. We'd be happy to help in any way. We have a very strong relationship with Edina City Council. We enjoy working with them. It's been very collaborative. We don't always agree, but that's not the point. It's how can we build a stronger Edina? So please feel free to let us know if you have any questions or comments.
Yeah, absolutely. And I would also add that there there was an eighth question in the set of questions that I sent her email to you guys. And feel free to write your thoughts and send them to me because we're we're definitely, you know, we want to listen to your ideas on how the Chamber of Commerce can partner with the city and with city council to do to maximize our business community here.
Great to meet all of you.
Yeah.
Maybe we'll get to meet in person someday.
Yes.
That that would be great. Good luck, everybody.
Thank you.
So much.
Thanks, guys.
Night.
All right, take care.
Thank you.